And that clock says 5:01. My clock on my computer says 5 o'clock, so either one, take your pick. Kathy, could we have a real call, please?
Casper?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
Hoagland?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience have a comment for us this evening? I think you know the drill, but please state your name clearly for the record. Thank you.
Well, it's different being on this side. Hi, good evening, agency members. My name is Susan Walkie and I reside in Lincoln City. Two and a half years ago, I was hired as the part-time Bama Downtown Manager. And I know tonight you're considering all the tools in your urban renewal toolbox and funding the Downtown Manager position was one of those tools that has been in the toolbox. When I was hired two and a half years ago, I was hired part-time with a maximum number of hours to work and there was no stated minimum. Some months I worked very little and the board had no problem with that. I was under the impression that there was a set amount of money that had been budgeted for the position. And I offered the Bama Board two years because I was close to retirement age. It was my understanding that there was money available for a person to be employed after I retired. During my time as Downtown Manager, I increased the membership of the Bay Area Emergence Association and I added a new event to bring people to Lincoln City. I'm not sure that there will be anyone to organize the Sandcastle Contest if there's no Downtown or Bama employee. It would be sad to see a tradition of close to 50 years die because of no leadership. It brings lots and lots of people into town and it's a tradition that people count on. They call in January and February to find out the date. I think it's a useful tool for urban renewal dollars. I think that the Bay Area, the Taft, now Scott, Cutler City area is in need of a little economic push and I would hope that you would give it a little more time. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, the next agenda item is minutes of meeting. We have none. No. No public hearings. That moves us to Special Order of Business and Presentations. And so Ms. Robertson, would you come up, please?
Good evening, Chair Hinton and agency members. Thanks for asking to bring this forward. I know it's been a while that we've been talking about expanding our toolbox for economic development and we have quite a few that we can create. I'll just go ahead and start at the top here. This is the Urban Renewal Agency Toolbox. And this is the only toolbox that we have is through the Urban Renewal Agency at the moment. And the objectives of this meeting here tonight are to present the agency with options for additional economic development tools, answer your questions about how to accomplish any goals that you have in mind, and then determine staff direction. To give a little background, in 1999, the agency created the Facade Improvement Loan Program as a tool to help implement the Taft Community Vision Plan. And 2009, we added economic development as a project to the plan for urban renewal, which more directly gave us a reason to create additional business assistance tools. And then, starting in 2012, we talked about options again and created a few more tools in addition to facade improvement. So we created the Local Program Support Grant, which is what our Small Business Development Center typically applies for each year. And we also have funded by local of Lincoln County in the past. And in 2013, we approved, or you all approved, the Business Expansion Loan and Energy Efficiency Loan. Keep in mind that these are focused on commercial properties, not residential, and folks do have to live in the, not live, sorry, be located within the urban renewal area. Then in 2014, we made available the Downtown Manager Tool, which you just heard public comment about. And I think that is it on our toolbox for right now. There's a flyer in the back of the packet that shows you how we've been marketing our tools so far. It basically says if you're a property owner, you have these tools available. There are lower thresholds of funding requests. So $5,000 for property owners, if you want to improve the building, you have to have property owner permission, sorry, business owners. And then, business owners can make those requests. Property owners are up to $150,000 for facade improvement loan. These are all 0% interest loans. And then also, energy efficiency is up to $75,000. And we haven't made any rules about combining those tools, so a property owner could combine those if they would like. So, let's see, we've also made over 45 loans for facade improvement over the years. It's been 20 years, it's hard to imagine. And that tool was funded with $1 million to start. And so, that money has been loaned out, paid back, and loaned out again. So over $1.8 million have gone out into the community and then been repaid. So 10 years later, there was this directive by the agency to do more in the area of economic development. That was 2009. And so, staff got to work and held some meetings with local business owners. The Small Business Development Center helped us have some small group discussions. We met with area, regional, and state economic development professionals to brainstorm on what some tools might be that would work in our community. And we presented 22 options for your consideration. And at that time, that's when you moved forward with the tools additional to facade improvement loan. Let's see, so there are two ways that tools have been created in the past. The agency has created a tool where we know a need exists, so facade improvement loan, for example. And then the market takes advantage of this, or not. And the other way is if the market brings forward a proposal to us, and then we talk about whether or not we would want to create a tool to meet that need, that we kind of have a sense from people that they would want to use. Specifically, some of the tools that would address housing are listed in your staff report. And this would focus on missing middle, or what we call workforce housing, which is 60 to 120% of median family income. And those tools would propose expanding the facade improvement loan to include residential. We could offer mixed-use housing loans and missing-middle workforce housing loans. We could also expand energy efficiency loans to include residential properties. Of course, these all have to be within the urban renewal district. We could offer prepaid development fees, such as system development charges or permit fees, that could be repaid when the developer or builder gets to certificate of occupancy or either sells the home or has a rental agreement in place. There's also a tool in the packet called Infrastructure Partners, which is a lot of what urban renewal does in general. But this is a more direct tie to a project or a, you know, redevelopment project. So if we know that a project is going to happen, but they can't extend a water line or they can't extend a sewer line, that would be a direct way for us to loan those funds to the developer or builder in order to help them have less upfront costs. And then that could be repaid over time. And we also could offer Brownfield Assistance Tool. This would basically help landowners determine if they have any toxic soils on their land. And then, if they do have toxic soils, that would help to either get them grant money or partner in some way to help them clean it up, so that they could either build or they could sell their property for redevelopment. So in addition to the tools I just mentioned, which would specifically address housing, we could also add a couple more tools that would specifically address property development. As you may remember, we have four urban renewal properties and five city properties that we are partnering on for development. And some of those properties are residential and others are mixed-use. And there are a couple of tools that urban renewal could partner on if those properties are in the urban renewal district. Now, some of the city properties are in the district, but most of them are not. So let's say there's a road improvement, or again, sewer or water connection that could help be made. Even though the property's not in the urban renewal area, the road going to the property might be in the area. So we just don't know yet what resources you would want to make available for property development. But if you did, there are a couple of tools that we would recommend. One is the GAP Funding Program, which would allow some additional funding to compile with a regular commercial loan. Let's say the developer needs $1 million, they can only get $800,000. We could then look at that and loan them $200,000. And then the last one is the Visitor Attraction Loan, or Grant, which would provide funding to ventures with a business model that could be considered a visitor attraction. So this might be like a culinary center or a glass studio, or some other idea that we would love to see that's workable, that would be located in town. I want to also mention a couple things. There are 12 additional tool concepts that are in the toolbox that were not mentioned here in the staff report, and that's because they were not directly tied to either property development or housing. And those are more classically for business development. So there's something called a lease subsidy tool, where a new business who needs some assistance with their lease, we could help underwrite some of their lease costs for, let's say, the first year of business. Or maybe we help for 50% of the lease cost for the first year of business. Those kinds of details for each of these programs can be fleshed out later. This is basically an initial discussion of what tools you want to make available. And then, as we have applicants, or as you set priorities about how those funds should be used, we would come back to you and say, here's the proposal, here's the program criteria that would meet your objectives. And then we would kind of do the proposal, and we would do the discussion of whether you wanted to fund that at the same time as the program criteria. Budget, last part of the conversation, and probably the most important. We have about $500,000 in the urban renewal budget now, which, as you might remember, in 99, when we created this funding tool, it's a revolving loan fund, and so the money comes back after it is repaid. And so that money stays there and can get re-loaned out again and again. We don't like it sitting in the bank. We would rather it be out, working in the community and getting repaid back. We did, when you all did your last bond for the Urban Renewal Agency in 2017, there was a discussion about basically doing the last capital improvement projects for the urban renewal area. And then, that included the D-Lake Undergrounding, and we have one sidewalk left to build. And after those projects are done, those remaining funds, which we think will be about $400,000, has been directed by you to go into the Economic Development Toolbox. So again, remember, this is funding that's available just for properties located in the urban renewal district. We'll talk at the City Council Meeting about creating city tools, which would mean people who aren't located in the district could also take advantage as funding is available. Ron, did you want to mention anything about the budget?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So the $500,000 that Allison has been discussing, her funds that had previously been allocated towards this. One of the things that we have discussed and what we'd want to do is to not lose sight of the original intent of those funds, which is to expand the business opportunities in the community. I think it's a great idea to expand our toolbox, but would also encourage you, for those funds that are, that we currently have in the toolbox, they remain for the purpose of the business expansions. And then we look at adding other funding sources to finance the tools that Allison has listed there. It'd be very easy for that half a million dollars to be gobbled up pretty quickly and lose sight of its original intent. So we'd like to honor that intent and then have a discussion in our budget process about funding these tools if you decide to add them to the toolbox.
Are there any specific questions about the tools? Or how would you like to proceed?
I think that's a great place. Do any members have any questions or comments about any of these tools?
I just have a question for clarification. I'm not familiar with the vocabulary. On page four in the packet, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph, you talk about the two ways that tools have been created. You mentioned the market. Could you explain that, what that market means? You mean like the real estate market? Or how does it come to you from the market?
Yes. Basically, it's people picking up the phone and calling our office to say, do you have something to help me rehab my home because I rented out and it's affordable, you know, it's for workforce housing? So we have had a few inquiries like that. We also have had some initial inquiries from our partner developers on our public properties. And so those are ways that we can understand what the market interest is. Basically, what is the demand? We also, you know, when we created the Facade Improvement Loan, that might not be such a good example because that was really based on the whole Taft Community Vision. So there was a lot of conversation happening during that vision process. So I think that that one was probably from the market as well. We didn't just create it and then decide to wait and see if anybody was interested. The Energy Efficiency Loan, when we created that one, we did talk with City of Salem, and they had, I think, one taker on their loan program for energy efficiency that was just about lighting. So they didn't find that there was a lot of interest to do energy efficiency. And so, lighting is the only program criteria that they created for that. Whereas, we left ours wide open. So people could, let's say, replace a cooler refrigerator, they could do lighting upgrades, they could do some HVAC, heating/cooling addition, basically whatever type of energy use equipment, if they need to upgrade it, they could upgrade it to a higher standard in order to reduce their operating costs for that business. So that was one that we partnered with Energy Trust of Oregon and City of Salem to get a lot of information on the ground first. And then, we've had two businesses in town take advantage of that loan. So we'd like to see more, but you have to be ready to do the replacement of the equipment or be really motivated to reduce your operating costs to start with.
So it's kind of like, if you have an idea, come forward to you and see where it fits into the toolbox?
Yeah, we're always happy to hear what would be helpful for people. And I think that we have had conversations with people in the past about how they could use assistance.
I have one tedious question. You mentioned the Infrastructure Partners, and in reading through it, it kind of looks like Public Works is the infrastructure partner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what we're referring to?
Well, the infrastructure, urban renewal would pay for or loan money to create the infrastructure necessary for the development to happen. So Public Works, the Public Works Department wouldn't be involved, but the infrastructure would be a public work project, would be like an expansion of a sewer line, which is a public work.
So the developers then would become part of those partners?
We would be partnering with the developer to do the infrastructure project. Yes.
Okay. If I could just follow up her question, Member Casper's question with the energy efficiency, could that be if someone wanted to add on solar or some other way to help their energy?
Sure. I remember someone years ago saying, you have to eat your energy efficiency veggies to eat your renewable desserts. So let's say if you have, you know, a really outdated heating system and you put solar panels on your house, that's not really going to help too much until you replace your heating system first. So yes.
Part of the package, then, it would make more sense.
Yes, and so you all could decide how you wanted to set up that program. And solar is a great option, even though we're in Lincoln City, a lot of people think that it won't work, but it actually does work in Lincoln City. And that could be included if you wanted to prioritize it as, let's say, if they've done XYZ measures first, like replaced windows and done insulation and all those things, then they could do solar. Or, you know, there might be some other way to include that as an option. We haven't excluded it. So if there's a business that comes forward and wants to do solar, we would talk about that and see if it's the right fit for the program.
Chairman, you?
Yes.
Allison, I'm not real clear on, so there's money that is now on loan in different programs? And how much is in the bank?
Yeah, there's about $500,000 in the bank-
Oh, okay.
-that we can make available through any number of programs. Basically, we're doing that now with our programs that we have. So facade improvement, energy efficiency, and business expansion. If somebody wants to come in and take advantage of those three programs, we have $500,000 to go for those.
And another $400,000 could be made available, the leftover funding from the end of the-
Yes, after my sidewalk's done. Your sidewalk's done.
Actually, my sidewalk.
Your sidewalk. In particular, your sidewalk.
I use the Roby's sidewalk a lot. I guess, I mean, all of these tools sound great, sort of, as ideas, but how can we know what a reasonable infusion of, would it need an infusion of funds and what would be a reasonable amount? And where do we shift that money from, I guess is my question.
The question of the evening.
Well, I don't think that's the question. This isn't a budget. That's a budget question. The question is, do you want to diversify that $500,000 in other programs? Right now, I think Allison said three programs. Now, this is a long laundry list of potential, but you're still working off $500,000 plus maybe $400,000. So it's not new money or add to.
And then, and I'm sorry, and is it possible to expand to other areas of the city and to residences for residential renovation? Solar panels on my roof, for example?
Well, yes, to the earlier questions. Not sure on the last question about solar. Yes, part of the recommendation is to, for you to consider expanding the existing tools like facade improvement to include residential. If you want to do that, there's a list, what I mentioned, those, let's see, seven tools that could be specific to housing. Or you could just say, make them all available pending the budget, but we want to prioritize our public property development first, and we want to prioritize housing. We don't yet know, if you make a tool available, how much market interest or demand we're going to get. And as Mr. Chandler mentioned, we have $500,000. So you may want to say, hey, let's make XYZ available, or A through Z available, whatever you all decide. And then, as we get through the budget, we can make other decisions about how you want to fund that with whatever is available to fund.
Madam Chair, I also might point out that these funds are specifically tied to the urban renewal district and could not be made available outside the district. If you would like, we have in the City Council Meeting a discussion about expanding the toolbox to include city properties and not outside the urban renewal district. But that's a discussion will be in the next meeting.
I want to also mention that urban renewal money is designed to go to capital improvements only, not to operations or maintenance. With the city toolbox, if you decide later to create tools for the city, which again, would not be restricted to the urban renewal boundary, those tools could be a combination of loans and/or grants, as you might want to, you know, forgive half of a loan if it is continuing to serve the workforce market, for example. There are lots of, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, because as we decide if you want to create these tools, we would get into the criteria and how you want the program to work. In the meantime, if we have some interest, I would bring that forward to the loan committee. And the loan committee would talk about it, and we could answer some questions. And then, when the loan committee's comfortable, we would take that to the agency for discussion. We, of course, keep you informed of what's happening. But that would be the process, which is basically what we do now for our existing tools. Staff has the criteria, and then we take that to the committee. And then, if the committee recommends it to the agency, it goes to you for final approval.
Any other comments, questions? Yes? Mr. Anderson?
Allison, I guess, I think that these tools are great for business. I'm confused why we keep bringing up housing with it, other than it's a topic, you know, overall for the community and probably very fitting for a city council. So I've concentrated more and think that since we are doing other things with housing and $500,000, I'm still leaning very heavy on any kind of program that would push or entitle or expand businesses. Not that housing availability wouldn't, but we're, that's a different area, and I think we're tackling that. So, and it's been said a number of times tonight, again, that there's, it's only in the renewal district. I haven't heard any kind of numbers of the housing that's available in this urban renewal You know, because I think that may be where some of the discussion has flopped over into housing, because we talked about it as a, you're wearing other hats. So I guess I would caution my, you know, commission partners to be thinking, you know, simply of business. The other thing I noticed going through this, that, you know, it's sometimes 20 years old, other times 10 years old of tools. And other than the facade, you've given, you know, two loans for energy efficient since, you know, what's that, five years, almost six years? And, you know, not a lot of use, other than the facade. And I'm just wondering if there is, you know, I hate to say time for an update, but, you know, maybe these aren't the right tools at all? And I, you know, I was, I've said before that I think one of the bigger barriers is childcare. And I noticed that we've had that here on the list for a long time. And one, I would see that starting, you know, it would be a business and certainly help employers and employees. Your Brownfield Assistance made sense, some of these, but I don't know where I would take away from. And I wonder if you get any feedback from call-ins, or, you know, occasionally you get a call. But is there anything, more than two calls, in a, the one that we either haven't tapped yet or have on the list, but we haven't initiated it yet, that as director, you'd be saying, this is a newfound need in town for the business community?
I wish I could say, yes, we're having our door knocked on all the time and asking for a specific tool. We've had three or four calls in the last five years about residential loans. So there seems to be demand for that, whether it be a city tool or an Urban Renewal Agency tool. So, there seems to be demand for that, whether it be a city tool, an urban renewal agency tool, or somebody else's pot of money. I don't know, but it, it sounds like people who typically own second homes or own smaller multifamily units, or in some cases, I think, maybe residential over commercial. Again, because this is mostly along Highway 101, we do have some residential over commercial. There may be, of course, we're assuming that all these people are wanting to take out loans, even though they express an interest, and that they can qualify. So, they have to have 30% equity in the property, they have to be basically financeable. And so, so residential is the most interest I've had. Keep in mind, again, that's three to four calls in the last five years. We have had, as you mentioned, the business expansion loan, and we have not had any takers on that. And I think that that's because we have a challenging business environment, being tourism-based. And we also do work with the Small Business Development Center, as you know, partnering in order for them to offer scholarship classes to urban renewal agency-located businesses. And so, I think that if the Small Business Development Center saw a need for someone, and they have sent people our way, they just haven't resulted in applications. And so, I also think that there's a bit of a challenge, because a lot of our business owners don't own their properties. So, there can be a little hesitance about how much investment to make in someone else's property. And so, I'm kind of rambling about what I've heard and what I've seen. But, yes, maybe they're not the right tools, or they're there, and if somebody applies, that's fine. But I think that, you know, we wouldn't be talking about adding more tools if we didn't think that there might be a need to diversify that toolbox so that people could pick up whatever tool would be helpful for them.
Right, Madam Chair, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, because you've, you hit it on top of the head, and as far as I'm concerned, that they've got to qualify for a traditional loan. And so, I'm assuming the two calls you've gotten in five years are really looking for free money, first and foremost, probably. And/or looser underwriting standards than, than a traditional bank.
Well, I think they were interested in 0% interest loans-
I'll bet.
-which is nearly free money.
Yes.
So, I, I have had some other calls on grants, but mostly it's been loan.
So, I, I guess I'm not, I'm not moved, quite frankly, with a need to, to change anything. And I, I don't know, I'm, I'm open, but I don't know why.
You mentioned the childcare and the brownfield tools.
Yeah.
Brownfield tool, in my opinion, would be helpful for the properties that are along Highway 101 that have not redeveloped. As we know, the Goodwill property took about 10 years to redevelop. And I, I think beyond conversations and permitting, there wasn't any monetary partnering on that project from the city, whether it could be from the city or urban renewal. Also, the municipality has to be the, kind of, the pass-through of grant money from DEQ, or whether it be federal or state. So, if we are not marketing ourselves as a possible partner for all of these property owners along the highway, who either want to sell their property or redevelop themselves, they may feel overwhelmed by the burden of just not knowing. And if there's a tool available where we can either request grant money, or we could make loans available or grants available, again, grants is better on the city side than on the urban renewal side, then that might help us catalyze some redevelopment on those properties, rather than having them sit-
Sit idle, yeah.
-undeveloped and at a lower tax rate. So, so I, I don't know if I helped narrow things down for you, but-
We'll keep going.
They're all good tools. We just don't have a way to know if they'll be taken advantage of.
Member Casper?
There's one on here, the Internet commerce conversion loan. And I don't know if anybody's applied for that, because there was a discussion about why don't we have more businesses using the Internet? And in my explorations, I've learned that probably this loan could be helpful if the business were to have a shared or dedicated line. The dedicated line is, of course, more expensive. And then, if they have to run connections from the nearest port to the business, I could see that would be where the loan would come in helpful as well. Even though the providers will give that loan, like, a 10-year payback period, that might be something to consider retaining or embracing, so people know that that's available. Would that be something that could be used for?
Well, the program details are not set by, by you yet. So, if that's something that you want to include, then, you know, we would, assuming that it works for everyone, we would put that in the criteria, that, that, that's a possible use of that.
Okay, because there's, there's, there's no pattern yet for the use of that, is that correct?
That's right, yes.
So, if anybody's listening, I think that might be something the market could bring to you?
Sure. Okay, sure. Yes. We also don't need the market to make any of these available. We can make them available and then talk about it through media and press release, and then see what kind of market response we get.
I'd like to suggest we talk about that sometime in the future, or keep it for discussion.
I put a circle on it.
So, is there a reason that we shouldn't just say, "Sure," all of the above, and just see what the demand is, and then, you know, I mean?
I would like to narrow it down a little bit for Allison, I think, because she would like to flesh out the ones that we believe are the most important or have the most potential. So, maybe we could do that in tiers, like the first set would be the ones that have been mentioned so far, I would say. One thing I do want to ask about is the residential over business. Do you, in all your wisdom, and do you, do you see that there's potential there? I mean, is there interest, do you think, for assisting that process? You have, you know, exterior staircase, or an elevator, or renovation, or whatever all those things are on your list. It sounds to me like that would have potential, but I'm just wondering, and looking in the district and the area and the buildings within it, does anything come to mind?
Because we don't have the tool available, we haven't directly marketed for that tool. So, I, I think you're right in, in helping staff understand what your priorities are. But at the same time, Agency member Mark is, is right. I mean, you could just make them all available, given that the funding would be prioritized for ABC, or, you know, in that way, what, what you would want to achieve with the use of those tools. So, so I don't have anything specific, you know, I, I could make some inquiries, I could work with our GIS coordinator to figure out how many properties we actually have. I mean, there's a lot that would go into creating the programs.
That's what I, yeah.
But we, we don't, you know, staff hasn't done a lot of in-depth on all of these. These are really high-level ideas. And we can talk about what ideas you like, and then we can worry about how to implement them later, if we get a response about it.
I have another question, too, about what member Anderson was talking about. Historically, I believe, urban renewal districts haven't been focused, focused on the businesses and regenerating, you know, an area that's been outlined. To your knowledge, are there other urban renewal districts in Oregon that are now taking on housing because of the need is so great?
Yes. Absolutely.
So, it's coming from, it's not just because we're interested in housing, there's-
There's a connection there, yes. It just depends on priorities. Of course, we're at the end of our funding for this urban renewal district, so, and I think it was, I can't remember if it was 2009 or '14, that we added the ability to partner with workforce housing developers. So, that is in your purview. It's just that it came in rather late, in, since 1988. And so, you know, we, until we made our public properties available, we really didn't have a reason to create tools to partner on workforce housing development. Now, we understand better. We have had a lot of conversations with housing developers and builders, who are very interested and very committed to making sure that they can provide the right type of housing. Of course, you know, they're not nonprofits that can just, I mean, even nonprofits have to meet their balance sheets. But, and we have had a lot of conversations with nonprofit housing developers as well, people who are already here and people who want to be in our community. So, I think that, you know, with limited funding, you know, that's all up to you as policymakers to decide if urban renewal money should be used to address housing, or if you want to keep it for business. But it is possible to use it for housing, if you decide to do that.
Okay.
Assuming it's in the urban renewal area.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's why the, by the residential above a business, kind of, was ringing a bell for me, because that's where the focus is. Mr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, just a thought, because as you raised the flag of not wanting to send Allison off on a mission to-
This is a lie.
Yeah. I'm, I'm wondering out loud, so don't take this as anything other than a thought. I noticed the, the agency after us has got the same agenda item in the discussion about these tools for the city. I'm wondering if we focused on looking ahead to tools here, or others, that, that if, if could go citywide, would have a lot more juice, a lot more value in them? Except, I remember the write-up, where urban renewal dies in '24 or earlier. That's what, four years or less away. We're going to spend a year easily dancing on tools. So, I'm wondering if we were going to, if we were going to direct staff to do some work of pulling some dynamics of tools together, that we had to look beyond urban renewal district and, and to what might be a value city-wide? Because my next question is, when urban renewal, this urban renewal dies, I assume the money goes to the city?
Yes, and yes and no. The Urban Renewal Agency will continue to exist as long as it has assets to manage, so property or programs. If you have program income, you can continue to operate that. Now, the next question is, if the boundary is gone, does that mean that you can make it available city-wide? I, I think the answer to that is yes, but would want to get a second opinion to make sure. And, yeah, I'll stop there, so I don't go into other topics tonight.
That, that's all I was thinking, if, if in fact, you know, this $900,000 potential rolls to the city as a, for the same tools, or, or tool, economic tool chest, you know, that, that maybe we ought to be thinking of tools that would benefit more than, where you were going, more, more than just business. But that way would be including housing, or this, even the infrastructure, trying to get development. And I, I'm, even that infrastructure alone, wondering why, you know, that couldn't include Internet, or, you know, broadband, or the technology, not technology, but the fiber to areas. I, I'm nervous to send you on a three-year development of programs that get two calls in five years.
I understand.
And I would rather not have that money just sitting there, but it go to good use. So, and if we aren't getting a good, you know, feedback from people who could be using this, then maybe they aren't the correct tools or the right tools for everybody. And so, maybe we need to expand them, so we can see if there are other ways in which we can service this district. Somebody's beeping. But at this point, with 14 minutes, 13 minutes left, I'm not sure how far we can get in narrowing the list, and if we want to do that. But I certainly would not want to send you away today with this entire list, asking for them all to be fleshed out. I think, though, that there has been interest in the childcare idea, and that serves, I think, all business. And the Internet commerce was also mentioned, the-
Energy efficiency.
The energy efficiency and the brownfield. I think those, those are the things that people have pulled out this evening to talk about. I'm almost also interested in if there's interest in the residential over business, and if there could be some incorporation somehow between helping the business. And that might be something that may be of interest to some, I'm not sure. Have to drive the district and look at every building, but you, you'll be doing that. And, and so, if there's some ways, like to juice up or jazz up the energy efficiency loans, let people expand their thinking about what that could mean, or whatever, then, you know, like adding solar, if they change the HVAC, or their furnace, or, or whatever.
So, just to clarify, for energy efficiency, do you mean to expand that to residential? Or do you mean to allow things like solar for commercial businesses?
Well, I was thinking about businesses, just in the traditional sense, and I'm not sure what Mr. Mark was thinking.
First of all, when, three years ago, I had a long conversation with the fellow at the Best Western, went to a big solar project, and it works great in Lincoln City. He did have extensive interior remodeling of the water heating system and all that. It was a lot of money, but it's, I don't know what the status is now, but he was really excited about it, and seemed to be working the way he wanted it to. And I would encourage, if we could offer that up to, to residences, I think that'd be great. What I was wondering is if we could just ask staff to come back with a narrower suggestion. I certainly don't have the experience and the expertise to say, oh, do this, do this, do this, but staff might have a better idea of what might work, what might draw interest, what might be more, most effective.
The other thing, the facade, if I could just chime in here, the facade, I'm kind of interested in what that would look like for the residential within the district, because that seems like that could be, that could grab hold, perhaps. And also, funding, the funding gap.
So, the tools that are here are the tools that we think would work. Whether or not they'd be taken advantage of, we can't predict. So, I'm happy to go into detail on more of these things at another meeting. But, you know, we, we did do quite a bit of research and due diligence about what tools could be available for our community. So, I, I don't know how else I can, you know, if I had a crystal ball, that would make things a lot easier, but I don't. So, really, the whole toolbox is what we think would work. These specific ones that you mentioned, we can go into more detail on those at a future meeting. And just to clarify that, you know, solar is available as energy efficiency now. So, it's not that we have excluded solar. Again, the program for energy efficiency is for commercial businesses, not for residential. And if you wanted to include energy efficiency for residential, we could do that. We have talked about facade improvement for, for residential, and that, I think, would, because it, if I'm correct in understanding what your goals are about workforce housing, it would be targeted at, you know, not a higher-end home, not an ocean-view home. It would be, you know, maybe at or below the median sales price. It would be basic habitability, so maybe roof, maybe- It would be basic habitabilities, so maybe roof, maybe siding, not an addition for a pool room or a home theater, for example, which are great projects, but not really good purpose for public funding.
And I'd like to add another one, too, which is under the heading of community appearance, and that would be signed change-out grants. I think that's important, and it will be very important in the future, as we move through our sign ordinances and design standards. I think that would fit in perfectly. So I guess we aren't throwing any of them out.
Okay.
And I would be willing to work with you to kind of think this through, if we can bring it back to the group to?
I think it might be simplest if I go through your shortlist, and maybe talk about what the objectives would be for those programs. And then if those objectives are clear, then we could worry about what the actual criteria are later. It's really up to you about when you want to make the tool available. If you want to say it's available now, and we just haven't hammered out details, then we might receive more phone calls than if you said, we're still working on it, and two years from now, we actually have a tool ready. You know, given that we have, well, I guess the funding isn't going away, but you're right, we would prefer the funding to be out in the community, working on funding projects and being paid back, rather than sitting in the bank of being unused.
And there was another one, education, I can't put my finger on it.
The workforce education?
Yes.
Yes. So we have a great connection with our workforce housing, sorry, workforce folks, Workforce Investment Board, Heather Desart and her team are great. And her office is at the Oregon Coast Community College North County Center, and she works very closely with the Small Business Development Center. So there is a lot that we can be doing with workforce. Again, it just depends on how much funding and what your priorities are, given the staffing and other resources.
And I think before we close up here, I'd also like to remind us of our one testifier this evening, and the interest in keeping the Downtown Manager position going.
And that, that fund is, is in the budget, and again, Mr. Chandler mentioned that that'll be a budget consideration for Budget Committee. And these expansion of tools are not excluding either, either of the existing tools, so local program support grant, which we currently partner with SBDC or with Downtown Manager. So we're not proposing to eliminate tools, we're proposing to add new tools.
And one final thing, I think, final thing, is that, let me find it. The Internet Commerce Conversion Loan Program, if that, if, I just want to ask member Casper, in all the work that she has been doing to try and expand the opportunities here, you had mentioned at one time, I think it's called a white box, or Microsoft Box, or I can't remember what it's called. And I'm just wondering if those could, if we could, if I'm saying the right?
That's for rural broadband, it's for series, and it goes between 25 miles, and it's basically over terrain, it's for more rural areas, it wouldn't be appropriate for this.
So this would just be the?
Yeah, just this connection down that fiber from 101.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I think that the way that we've written the Internet Commerce Conversion Loan, this particular tool is really designed to help someone who has a storefront make their merchandise available online. So I think the tool that would be better for what you're trying to achieve is, as agency member Anderson mentioned, is for infrastructure. So we could do an infrastructure partner tool and include, as one of the ways you could use the tool, for connecting fiber for internet for business. So I'll make a note of that.
Okay, that's certainly becoming a utility.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments, for the good of the order? Nope. Okay, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
I don't know if we gave you much, but.
Yeah, no, this is great.
Give you enough for a round two, perhaps.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have no resolutions. We have had no executive session, so we have no work there. Comments from agency members? Nope, nope, nope. Okay, then we are adjourned.